What we're really interested is policy specifics. And in the case of Hercules, I see the issues as twofold. Issue number one is the ongoing budget problems. Issue number two is the debts and the one-time debts and the one-time assets and all the controversy surrounding those. If there are other things you want to weigh in on from a policy perspective, you know, I'm interested in hearing them. I don't think we want to spend a lot of time on the internal personalities right now. We've already said, as you know, what we think of this. And, I mean, I'm just not sure what, you know, you know, if you want to take issue with it, we're happy to hear it quickly. But, uh, that's not what the issues are for us. So, Bill, why don't you start first? Guy got Bill K on one end, I got Bill W on the other end, and it's like, oh my god. Okay. Start out, if you will, please. And just keep it to about a minute.
Hi there, my name is Bill Kelly, and I'm the city council in Hercules because I'm not fully satisfied with what I've seen in the changes over the last year, while I certainly commend-
You need to speak up a little bit because I got the non-Chiller-Chiller fan running through.
I can certainly commend what the current council has done in terms of reducing our expenditures. I'm very concerned about the fact I'm seeing nothing addressing future income, and that's a big concern to me.
I'm sorry, Bill, I'm really having a hard to-
Okay, just better than?
Yeah, true.
Okay. I'm concerned primarily when it comes to the ongoing budget, as you mentioned, with the fact I'm not seeing any plans for ongoing future income. The sale of land to build residential properties is not going to produce income for the city of Hercules going into the future. My favorite question recently has been, how do we pay the cops in 2015? Where's that money coming? And so I would like to be part of the council and work on solutions to that to try and get us to a place where we not only solve our current debt issues, but that we continue to exist into the future as a city that makes enough money to pay its way on it.
And so what do you see needs to be done then? The basic outlines, where do you see the solutions there?
I've set forth a platform with three points. Number one, I want us to be much more open than we've been. I would like to be able to say in the near future that Hercules has the most open government in the city, in any city in the state. And I think that's a huge issue because that's going to endorse some of the other things I feel are important. We need to become more business friendly. We can't just say we put a piece of property on the market and nobody wants to buy it for any residential, for anything other than residential purposes. We need to get aggressive and go out and look, and I think that's going to include what I was talking about in the third point, which is more citizen involvement, particularly an economic development group, an ad hoc committee, if you will, of citizens to help us in the area of developing more businesses, developing more plans to recruit business. We have to find out what businesses will do well in our community and go out and make it work for them. And since we don't have any money to hire anybody to do that, and those guys are expensive, we need to rely on the people and the talents we have within the community, and those are great. We've already got one ad hoc committee that formed itself to try and work on the return of the cultural festival. I want to see more of that, and I want to see the council behind those ideas.
Okay, so more open, more business friendly, what's the third point?
Third point is more ad hoc committees, more citizen involvement than we're getting now. There's been a lot of talk of shutting down, ad hoc committees doing less of it. I want to see more. I want to see as much citizen involvement as possible.
Seems like that's tangential to number one.
Yeah, I think that everything flows from number one. The important thing is, one of the problems that I've seen over the last few years is regardless of what we do, it seems like we're keeping a lot of secrets. I'll give you an example, two examples, actually, quickly. One is the Safeway deal. When Fred Del Torcia was the interim city manager, he announced that Safeway was interested in a piece of property. The next thing really publicly that we see about that is a year and a half later that we've entered into some kind of a deal with Safeway. Well, who else was interested? Who else have we talked to? What happened that year and a half? What happened in the interim? The citizenry seems to be uninformed. The second is, I recently was at a city council meeting where the city manager, I'm sorry, the city attorney said, I've got nothing to report about this case that we're involved in, lawsuit that we're involved in. And I said, wait a minute. Here's what we call the register of actions, the public record. Now, as an attorney, I know how to find that. And that said things that turned out to be untrue, by the way, and according to that document, the case had been dismissed. The city attorney said, no, it hasn't. But my question was, why in the world do I, as a lawyer, have to go out and dig that up and be told there's nothing to disclose? There's all kinds of information in here about what's going on in the case, papers that have been filed, arguments that have been made. It should be available to the public when they're public record, and we're being told there's nothing to report? I don't think we're being as open as we can be when things like that can happen.
Building on sort of what Bill said, because I agree with many of the things Bill said. I think we're-
Again, you're also going to have to speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I agree with many of the things Bill said in terms of the short-term issues with debt versus the long-term financial stability of the city. I think we need to look at all options and have smart and balanced growth. If we bring in only housing with the incremental tax revenue going to the successor agency, we are not going to have the money to pay for services, city services, police in particular. We are already behind what we're, the level we should be for our current population. So that is an issue. So we've got these fire sale deals going. The land was transferred to the city at a certain rate, and now we're selling it because that's all that can be available supposedly, but I don't know how aggressively the city has marketed the land. And marketed the land-
When you say you do not know how aggressively, you don't know because?
Because there's a lack of transparency in how things are being done. The broker came and said that they had done certain things, but that did not appear to be aggressively marketed, particularly within the plans and the visions that currently have the zoning, the current general plan that the city has for those parcels. Transparency is also an issue. There's been a lack of community involvement, community notification, community input, changes in direction where the community has not been adequately involved and participated. Surprises like the Safeway deal is probably one of the biggest things.
What was surprising about the Safeway deal?
Surprising about it was the way the contract was, the way the public was notified, the lack of proper public notification for hearings and things like that on public involvement-
For hearings?
Public hearings in terms of the change of use. It's the safe, the-
It's going through the process now, is it not?
Well, there's already a PSA in place. If you look at the PSA, it's very favorable to Safeway. There are, you know, there are issues in terms of, they want to have a 16-gas, 16-pump gas station, which is not part of the current EIR. There was a-
I'm confused because, oh, well, go ahead, and then we'll come back to this then, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
And in terms of how to address some of those things, well, there's several things. There's going to be proposed to increase the utility tax. There's opportunities for franchise changes. There's, I think the city has cut as much of their budget as they can, and so it's going to be very difficult, other than making sure Perks and Rec is neutral and things like that. But we do need to have economic development. I do think we have people within the community who have experience and could step up and help the city. The city needs to identify how they can increase their sales tax revenue, how they can attract businesses, what opportunities exist, and how to market the community as it is today and the future with what we have coming in the future, particularly in the waterfront area, to create a vision that potential retailers will seek.
Sure. Thank you.
I think the way you framed the discussion was good, and I'd like to talk about the timeframe or the financial issues. We, if we were in a perfect world or in a world with no deficit, we may not have made the decision we made. I'm not sure about that, but we may not have. But we have to look at a different timing perspective in the sense that we need to address the next budget. We did address that budget using reserve funds, but this doesn't exist anymore. And I understand the need to create additional incremental revenues, but the timeframe we have and the potential for development on those parcels, whatever we build on those, will not bring anything before two years or three. So I'd like to pay attention to this. What do we do between today and next June? We missed, as far as I know, about $750,000 before next June. What do we do? This is the conflict we have in timing, speaking of finances. I understand the need for long-term development, and yes, our city is not complete, but what do we do today, between today and June?
Do you want to add to that in terms of what you're thinking should happen between now and June?
I think we don't have a choice to address additional revenue before June by adding tax. I don't like tax per se, but we have to face the world. And if we don't add tax, what we'll do is simple, we will contract with the county sheriff. What else can we do? I know we have a long-term view for Hercules, and I share probably that view with a lot of people, but as a council member, I'm not going to compromise the city as is to look at that vision, we want it, but to address the short-term vision, the short-term needs. So yes, I would be in favor of adding and changing the user utility tax, which is today at a level lower than anybody else in the county. So yes, that would be my first recommendation.
Hector, I don't believe we've met before.
No, we haven't. I'm Hector Rubio, running for Hercules City Council. The primary involvement that I have has been through the budgeting and the fiscal prices in the city. We've, I became involved when the, originally, two years ago, we needed to cut $6 million out of the budget through the ad hoc financial committee. We made a number of recommendations, of which I'm the chair. Currently, that structural deficit is up to $1.6 million. And what, the primary thing that I believe needs to be addressed is-
Up to 1.6 million?
Yes.
You're saying it was less, the structural deficit in the city before?
Well, the numbers are, continue to evolve as the-
I mean, what's the trend line? I'm just trying to understand. When you say up to, that suggests it's been on an upward trajectory.
It is.
You think the old structural deficit in the city was less than that?
No, the, it was $6 million originally, and we cut that, but subsequent to the revenues actually continuing to decrease because property taxes continued to go down.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand. I'm trying to get, you know, whether you're looking like this, this kind of timeframe or this kind of timeframe, because my memory is the structural deficit was a whole lot more than 1.6 in this city.
Well, it was, originally, it was $6 million, and we were able to cut that away.
Okay.
And once we redid all the numbers, we realized that that $6 million wasn't sufficient, that there was an additional money that had to be cut. And at that time, I mean, we're talking a two-year period here. So then the funds continued, the revenues continued to be lower than anticipated. So that deficit, which we thought had gone down to zero, turned out to be $300,000. And then when, in the following quarter, when we did the next analysis, that number went from, you know, $300,000 up to half a million, and in the current budget, it's up to 1.6 million. So the numbers are very fluid because revenues continue to go down, and additional cuts continue to be made. And what I'm saying is, these cuts are just not going to catch up with the drop in the revenues, so that revenues have to be increased. We're not going to get out of the financial problem by cutting, so that the revenue increase has to be there. And what I'm suggesting is greater retail development, bringing in additional sales tax revenues, is what will help alleviate that structural deficit. Now, the, so the argument is, does Hercules stay a bedroom community, or does Hercules become a balanced community that also has retail as well as commercial within the city limits in addition to all the residential that's there?
Does Hercules stay a bedroom community or what?
Whether it becomes a balanced community that includes residential, retail, and commercial development. At the moment, it's primarily residential.
Do you think there's a lack of retail space right now?
Yes, very much so.
Okay.
Okay, let me ask you this, though. We do a lot of this, a lot of cities, and I believe, I don't believe we've had one city that came in here and didn't say, we need more retail. Where are you going to get it? How are you going to get it? Who are you going to get it from? Who are you going to beat out?
The, right now, we have one shopping, one major shopping center, which is Creekside. We've got a smaller neighborhood development that has a supermarket in it, the Lucky's supermarket. And then there's a very small gas station with a small development with it. And that's the extent of all the retail within Hercules. There's a very large parcel that's currently called Market Hall, which is the primary piece of land that's been sitting there undeveloped for over a year, and the city has already invested $12 million in that property, but it's generated-
It's no longer theirs, though.
No, it's not theirs, but the ownership is not important. It's what is built on the land-
Well, but isn't that the very question Dan is asking? You know, I mean, you have this parcel that is sitting there that everybody thought was going to be this great thing, and it has not, for many, many reasons, materialized. But if it was economically such a winner right now, when's it be coming forth?
Well, but the-
It's no longer because of city restrictions.
No, the, I think the approach to that particular parcel, it's tied up because of the previous development that was unrealistic. The, and I believe that that's been the delay because there was an intent to build a lot of housing as well as commercial on that parcel that's completely surrounded by very high traffic. So it's, the back of it is the actual freeway, one side is the on-ramp to the freeway, the other side is the off-ramp to the freeway.
So what would you propose doing?
So this is a parcel that needs to be developed essentially for automobile-centric retail.
Okay, so how would you direct that? I mean, how would you make that happen?
That the current-
You don't own that parcel anymore.
No, but the city has a vested IDP interest. There's a development agreement on that property. That needs to be rescinded, modified-
How do you rescind a development agreement? You know, latterly.
Well, all agreements have a clause to be able to terminate it or modify it, so I-
There's not that development agreement vested right?
Well, yes, but it's not set in stone, and you cannot change it. The city has to be able to go back and modify this agreement that is not generating anything for either the owner of the property or for the city itself.
Maybe I'm not understanding vested rights. Once you grant a developer development agreement?
The developer's not able to proceed with the agreement that they have at the moment because the market-
Was there a time limit on that vested right?
It was a very poorly written agreement that, which did not give a particular timeline. The only thing that, the timeline that that agreement required was for the money to be paid to the city, the purchase agreement, based on whatever was developed to the property. So that a certain amount of square footage built on the land would translate into a certain for-sale price that the city would receive. But the, the only reason-
Yeah, go ahead, yeah. But we might, we probably have to wrap up and move on. I'm sorry I asked you so many questions. I'm just trying to understand.
Well, so the, essentially, it's the structural changes that have not occurred within the city to address the structural problems. We're still relying on the true funding, the traditional funding. You know, you've got the utility taxes, you've got property taxes, you've got the automobile, the tax that comes in from the state, and that's the extent of all the income and revenue that the city has. So I, structurally, the city is missing that large piece, which is the retail development.
And, and, well, okay, let's, we'll come back to that. So, okay.
But I've used up a lot of time, so I-
That's okay, that's okay. I asked you a lot of questions, and my apologies for having done enough to do there. Okay, Phil, you're on.
Thank you. I'm Phil Simmons, I'm running for council. I have three key points on my platform, two of which deal with financial issues and development. One is a plank dealing with smart growth, and the other is dealing with economic development. I've listened to several answers here-
You said three, smart growth, economic development.
And the last doesn't have to do with your question. It has to do with the method in which the government operates. It has to do with transparency, openness, and what I would like to call inclusionary government. We can talk about that if you'd rather.
Go ahead and go with the first two, and we'll have a quick discussion of transparency.
The question that you've asked has led to answers that I think need to be cleared up quickly. We have two issues financially in our city that are, that sometimes get mixed up in how we move forward. One answer has to do with the city's budget, its direct budgets, general fund, the way it brings in money and the way it pays for its basic services, and what services are needed to keep that budget in balance. The other issue deals not with that, but deals with our long-term debt obligations, and in particular, a very short-term debt obligation that has had the city in crisis for a long time, but a known crisis for about a year.
Which one in particular is that collectively?
For the immediate, that would be the Ambac and Oliver debts owed, and particularly the Ambac lawsuit upon-
On Sycamore North.
No, that, Oliver is on-
I'm sorry, Oliver North on Sycamore North, and Ambac on the bonds, basically.
Let's talk about that particular issue first, because it's the most, as one of the folks here said, that's probably the most important to get done quickly. We need to pay off that debt very, very quickly.
Both of them collectively, or which one?
I'm talking about Oliver and Ambac. In particular, Ambac, Oliver comes along with that discussion.
Okay.
We've got to do that quickly, because if we don't, our general fund is going to get hit even harder because of the legal fees that's going to ensue and some of the other costs along the way in getting that resolved. So we do need to deal with that right away. The question is, how do we deal with that the fastest? Where we stand right now, this city council has attempted to handle that problem in the most expedient way that they could to get that debt paid off as quickly as possible. The problem is, is they made an initial mistake right out of the chute that drove us closer to bankruptcy and continues to drive us closer to bankruptcy.
What was that mistake?
It was the attachment of parcel, of Sycamore Crossings to the Safeway PSA. That particular deal, I'm the person that personally found out for the public that that parcel had been-
Is the attachment of Sycamore Crossing-
To a PSA with-
PSA.
Purchase and sell agreement. And that purchase and sell agreement is with Safeway, or actually Safeway's development firm. That PSA has several problems. The first and most-
Wait a minute, maybe, let me make sure I, okay, the tying of Sycamore Crossing, what do you mean the tying of Sycamore?
The fact that Sycamore Crossing is embedded in a purchase and sell agreement that the city council went into with Safeway, that's a one-year contract that is, that we have tied that parcel of land up with.
So what you're saying is they shouldn't have gone into contract with Safeway?
Precisely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. In going into that contract, the very first thing that's the most difficult part of it is that, known to the public for several years, we all knew this, and we all warned the city, city hall, and city council, there is a deed restriction that prohibits grocery stores own that parcel of land.
Right, I'm aware of that.
We did not take that land out to bid, we did not offer it and try to advertise it to any market whatsoever. We went directly to Safeway from some old documents that were in the city's file, where Safeway had approached us about that land years before. That, that particular deal was, have you ever played dominoes or set up dominoes and you knock one over and they all go?
I'm, go ahead, yeah.
That's what we did with this particular piece of land. By tying that piece of land up, by entering into a deal with Safeway without putting it out to market and trying to find better bidders, we did two things. We ended up having to fight a deed restriction, which a year later has not been completed. We did that in a way that the public wasn't aware of. I was the person that determined what we had done with the lawsuit. On October 17th of 2011, the city filed a lawsuit in Martinez against Save Mark, Lucky's, and their, and the associated companies. They did not notify that in any way other than to put a pole out in the middle of the property that the city owns, and they hung the lawsuit on it, encapsulated in plastic. While riding my bike, I saw that pole newly put out into the land, I wondered what it was, and I went and looked.
Okay, so-
So they did a very secret deal with Safeway without any public involvement. That parcel is zoned, mixed-use, has a complete developer agreement on it for mixed-use, and that mixed-use effort completely matches in every way the city's current zoning and the city's current general plan for development. It is a plan, that particular parcel has a plan for residential, retail, commercial, all blended together in a way that's harmonious to the rest of the community. Safeway came to the city and said clearly they want a general Safeway store with a big parking lot, a 16-pump gas station, things that would require that land to go through, if done legally, to go through a complete EIR, a complete SEQA, after removing a deed restriction. So going, and the purpose for the city going into that purchase and sell agreement initially was the city wanted to sell it right away and get the proceeds to pay Ambac and to pay all of them. Unfortunately, they then discovered they couldn't do that because it had a deed restriction. Now, if the city gets rid of the deed restriction, they still have a problem because there's a long-term process-
Okay, so what would you do now, seeing where you sit?
Here's what I would do. There are other parcels that the city owns that they've tied up in other purchase and sell agreements, primarily for nothing but residential.
What would you do with Sycamore Crossing?
I have to explain this, or you won't get a proper answer. Would you like a proper answer or just buzzwords?
I'd like the-
A proper answer, okay.
Proper with quick answers.
Yeah, Parcel C is another parcel, and Victoria Crescent is another parcel, and those parcels are tied up currently in purch, well, one of them, one of them keeps falling apart, we can't get a buyer, is tied up in a purchase and sell agreement for 350 apartments. The land is zoned commercial. It will need a lot of continuing effort, as Mr. Bollinger said. It will take a long time to get it implemented to be able to build residential own.
We're talking about Parcel C?
Parcel C. In the meantime, the purchase and sell agreement for Sycamore Crossings comes to an end in mid-January. There are already other developers that has expressed publicly to a citizens group of 15 in a city meeting that was sponsored by the, a certain developer, developer buying Sycamore North, that there is an interest in buying that entire parcel. That developer, as well as another developer that's expressed an interest, would be happy to buy that land and use it under the current zoning and the current planning. If we wait until January-
Sycamore Crossing.
Right. If we wait until January so we can be released from the mistake made at Sycamore Cross- Sycamore Crossings with Safeway, we will be able to remarket that property, find a buyer, either one of these other two developers, or put it out to market as it should have been done originally, and we can market and find ourselves a buyer that will meet the city's current general plan and current zoning, not require SEQA, not require an EIR, and we will be able to sell the land quicker than we're going to be able to do with the land that's attached to the lawsuit for Ambac and Oliver.
Tell you what, Phil.
Oliver and Ambac can get their money quicker.
Stop, we've got to move on. Okay, send me an email with your proposal, with the scenario of what you want. Send it to me this afternoon.
I can do that.
Dan.
Yes, we talked about budget and debts and assets. The city council has worked real strong to solve the budget problems. We did it through cuts. We have worked with the police department and other unions to have the police department take over their share of the purse. This last budget cycle, we had approached the Teamsters, and apparently when we came out and said that we were going to fill up, fill our budget with money, they backed away from the table. So the council decided to send out Mr. Duran and Ms. Warmerdan to renegotiate again. And so we have, just found out today, that we have an agreement with the Teamsters, which will also affect the mid-managers, because whatever the mid-managers, whatever happens with Teamsters, the mid-managers will accept. So we've come up with a resolvent with their purse, and they will be paying their employee share. So the council has been steadfast in solving those problems. Those are unfunded. We have to, we can't give that money away anymore, so we've been doing that. As far as the revenues, the council understands that we are lacking in revenues, and what happened with Safeway was that a Safeway deal was there in April of 2010, or 2011, 2011, I'm sorry, April 2011, it was brought forth to the council, and we never did anything with it.
And what?
The council never did anything. It came before any close session. And then with all the turmoil that occurred with the city.
This would be, that would be just before the recall.
Yes, sir. And so it never came, it never came back again. We understand that we have to create revenues. The Safeway store is a great revenue generator. There is a deed restriction on there, and we think as a council that we can get by that. And the problem is, is that that property, I've been there, and I lived in Hercules 23 years, that property has been a vacant property for 23 years. It's because the city, in their vision, insists on telling developers what is going to be built and where it's going to be built, and we have lost valuable, we lost Chipotle, and Whole Foods, and Peet's to Panome. That our Market Hall is a perfect location for that, and because we insisted on building a Market Hall, podium buildings with office space and garages, which is just too expensive to build, they went over to Panome. So we have to be a little bit more open to building. We have to be a little, much open to businesses and allow, just give them a chance to tell us their ideas. And I think the council is open to that. One of the candidates talked about Market Hall, $12 million. But that $12 million, seven and a half million was paid to the new park parking lot. Three and a half million was funded that we know illegally to them, okay? So when you're throwing out a number, it makes, it's a sizzle, it's a sensation. Market Hall, we will get something there. We do have an entitlement that we can use as a tool, but we're working with different developers.
Developer has the entitlement.
Correct. Well, what we own is the DIP, which sort of dictates what's going to go there. So if we can negotiate with them, we might be able to bring in the businesses that we want, but it's negotiating with them, and that's ongoing. So I think in the next three or four months, we probably will see some movement on that, but we can't come out and tell the public that. We don't own the property, but we do have some negotiating rights on there, and that's what we're trying to work through. Parcel C, it was real clear to me when I went to the Contra Costa Transportation Authority back in March, when they told this council and this city that you're not going to get another cent for your projects unless you pay your bills. We owe Ambac, we owe Oliver, we owe Calhapa. It was clear-cut to me that if we don't pay our bills, if we don't make ourselves financially sound, that projects that the public wants are not going to occur. And that means ITC. That means having to sell Parcel C to the highest bidder. We, we had eight developers, real estate developers, come in there, business development, that looked at the property, and they all came back and said, retail will not work on this property. Even if we did probably get, even if we did get a retail, a business development, it probably be, would have been a much lower price than what we got for the property. So we have to sell those properties. We, we're involved in a settlement agreement with Ambac that has to get sent. You know, if we don't pay.
Let's move on. Okay. Phil?
Good morning. Bill Wilkins. Primarily, the city has to remain financially solid. The last 15 months in the two budgets, we've cut seven and a half million dollars out of the budgets, reduced staff by about 45 percent. In the last budget that we just passed, we used about a million dollars of one-time revenue from our reserves. That was primarily to cover legal fees of about $800,000 and unemployment insurance benefits, which are a little over $250,000, $300,000. In July, the city passed a half-cent sales tax increase, which will help carry us for the next four years. But the fact remains is, we have to generate additional revenue. And there are two ways that we can do this. Now, in the city of Hercules right now, the largest revenue source that we have is the utility user tax, generates about 2.1 million out of our $12 million in revenues. Sales tax right now generates about a million five. With a half-cent sales tax, that will go up to about $2 million a year. We have to sell our assets to the best that we can to pay Ambac, and Oliver, and Calhapa. That's required by the court settlement. If you look at the Safeway site, the crossing site, with a gas station and a Safeway, and with the satellite retail, that could be as much as maybe a half million dollars a year in additional sales tax. If you look at the development of Parcel C with 350 apartment units, the benefit from that sale not only comes from the one-time diff fees that will be paid to the city, development impact fees.
I'm sorry, which parcel we're talking about?
Parcel C.
Parcel C.
The diff fees from Parcel C could be over $3 million in one-time money. Part of that goes to the school district, part of it goes to the fire district.
I'm sorry, the diff.
Diff, development impact fees.
Thank you.
And the city would get, like I say, a couple of million dollars out of there also, one-time money. In addition to that, every year, there are assessments paid by those properties. Right now, the city-owned properties pay zero property taxes. They're exempt. Once they're sold and put in private hands, there is revenue not only to the city, but to the county, to the school district, to the fire districts. Those monies will certainly add to our general fund revenue. Let me clarify a little something for you. The development and impact, or the development and disposition agreement that covers the Market Hall site is, while it's an entitlement to the developer, is totally unfeasible. Requires about 3,000 parking spaces and two different parking garages, calls for 180,000 square foot of office space, for which there is zero demand in Hercules for any such number of.
So your point is that they're going to have to come back to you in the future?
They have to come back to us. They're not going to build that. It's part of why.
Are they talking about coming back to you?
Absolutely. The reason nothing is happening on that property is, that property is caught between a rock and a hard place.
Okay, so that's your leverage.
That is our leverage. That's what nobody else explained to you, is that that proposed development is totally unfeasible, and they have to come back to us. The other side of the rock is that that property is now, there's a lien, a loan against that property, a little over $2.5 million, hard money loan.
I can only imagine.
And, yes, and that.
And where might that money have gone?
Well, Mr. Weigle took that money and lent, and basically left the city with an eyesore.
I'm shocked, shocked, shocked.
Yes. And now, like I say, there's a new, a new man in town, James Fowler, and he is trying to sell that property. But of course, if you talk to a developer, and I have talked to several, you'll find that they are, they've got the hard money lender on one side.
So who has the ownership on it now?
It's James Fowler.
How did he get the ownership?
I have no idea how he ended up with the money from, or with the property from Mr. Weigle and Red Park.
Somehow they ended up with it.
Right. But anyway, that's, that's a problem with that parcel. And the developers that have come in have said, we have a problem here. We're stuck. We can't build what you want, because it's totally unrealistic. And the lender wants their money upfront. They're not going to transfer title. So they're coming to the city, saying, what can you do to release us from this development disposition agreement? And so that's our, that's our leverage. Okay? The other, the other reason I'm running is that we have a central Hercules plant that is totally unrealistic to the city. It calls for a total of about a half a million square foot of office space, five parking garages with a total of 4,700 parking spaces, and about 180,000 square foot of retail, maybe, actually, it's more than that, I can't remember the name of that one. And, yeah, it's about 400,000 square foot of retail, too. And over 1,220 new residential apartment units. And that's on what amounts to about three parcels, including the Market Hall site, the, what was referred to as the Cinematown, and Transit Town, and Crossings. And it's just not realistic. 470,000 square foot of office space in Hercules would be a blight, because there's no tenant for that kind of lease. So that's why I'm still here, is that we need to be realistic in what we expect in Hercules. And all in favor of the Safeway sale, I think we have every expectation that the deed restrictions are going to be taken care of before the end of this year, and then we're going to move forward.
Okay. So here's what I'm going to do now. Does anyone disagree that the three big debts, Ambac, Oliver, and Cal, have to be paid off?
It has to be paid off, absolutely.
Everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay. Does everybody agree that that has to be paid off with one-time money, if possible?
No.
No?
Not Calhapa.
Those are redevelopment debts. So ideally, it should come from the successor agency. Funding that, that they generate should go to pay off the redevelopment debts, and not from general fund debt.
Can I answer that question?
Yes, of course.
They didn't sue just the redevelopment agency. They sued the city, too. The debt, the debt was incurred, and leveled, and the settlement agreement based on the lawsuit was with the city and the form of redevelopment agency. So the city is on the books. It's not just a redevelopment debt, because the city took the 4.1 million and put it into the general fund.
That's specific to Ambac, not Calhapa.
That's a decision made by the current council, that the current council and the city manager put themselves in a position.
Hold on, let me back up so we're real clear here. Let me try this again, and we'll go through them all one at a time. Does anyone disagree that the Ambac money has to be paid off?
No.
Does anyone disagree that the Ambac money should come, the payoff should come from one-time money?
No.
No? Are you saying, no, you don't disagree?
I don't disagree.
Okay. Does anyone disagree that the Oliver debt has to be paid off?
That's, that, I will answer that. That is something that has not been brought forth to the public, and those of us sitting here, other than the incumbents, have very little information about the terms of that. So answering that in a fair and honest way is impossible. It goes to the secrecy of how we operate our city.
Okay.
That Mike Oliver is on the books.
Do you have any doubts about what the Oliver debt is about?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Oliver is on the redevelopment obligation payment schedule. It's been on there since date one.
But the terms of the negotiation with Oliver is not public.
Okay. So, so let me ask you just one quick question, Phil. Would you rather drag these debts out against the general fund?
Not at all. I would rather pay them as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Okay. Do you guys have, do you agree on the Calhapa, that you'd like to pay it as quickly as possible?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone disagree, then, that these debts, it would be good to get them off the books as quickly as possible?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I do rule in agreement with that.
Okay, fine. Now, let's go to the sources. Is everybody in agreement that you don't have general fund money to pay this off?
Yeah.
Okay. So is everybody in agreement, then, that consequently, you need one-time money to pay off one-time debt?
Yeah.
Conceptually here, everyone in agreement here? Okay. So let's go to the one, the one-time parcels real quickly. And I'm going to go through them one by one, okay? And I want a five-word answer. I don't want a long answer. And I'm going to go through them one by one. Parcel C, I'm going to start with you, Bill.
Okay.
And I want to know your short answer to what should happen to Parcel C.
We should proceed with the existing purchase and sales agreement?
Thank you.
Okay.
Dan?
I voted for the purchase-sale agreement. I agree we should sell it.
Phil?
We should not sell the Parcel C in its existing state. It will take far too long to bring that sale to a close because of the changes required for zoning and the city's general plan, which will take far too long.
Okay, we heard all that. Okay. We heard all that earlier. Okay.
You can't get there with that parcel.
Okay.
Parcel C should be sold right away, but for a mixed-use development, which is what's currently zoned for the property, so that it would be residential on one portion and commercial retail along the jump.
So you would not, so you do not favor the sale of Parcel C as its current, you do not favor the current residential sale?
The current residential sale has a very.
I didn't ask for, I wanted, you do not, it was, yes or no?
The current sale includes a potential retail parcel.
Yes.
And I would only agree to it if that retail parcel is included.
I'm afraid I have to interrupt.
No, you may not interrupt.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
No, I'm not there to, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My apologies. I know my eyesight's sort screwy sometimes. Okay. So, so you would favor the current sale if the designated portion for commercial is kept?
Correct.
Okay.
So that both residential and commercial is included.
If I'm correct, the current, the current residential or the current commercial, if I'm remembering the parcels right, uh, duh, 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 duh. 350 apartment units, right?
Correct. Plus, there's a line in the agreement that states a potential area that may be included for retail development if they're able to find tenants.
Okay, and so, and what's your feeling? Is that not good enough for you?
It needs to be stronger than that. It, right now, it's, it's up to the developer if they want to.
So you favor the sale only if there's a requirement for retail?
Yes, to be included, so that it, it maintains the current zoning of a mixed-use, both residential and retail.
Okay.
Gerard?
I'm in favor of keep moving with the same project we have now, because I'm against the division of business in this economy.
Gerard?
I favor either modifying or finding another developer for the mixed-use development as planned.
Finding another buyer. Phil?
I agree that we're in a nutcracker. I mean, you'd get this sold as quickly as possible.
I'm sorry, you're going.
I said, I agree that we're in a nutcracker, and we've got to sell this as quick as possible to get the money. I said, I agree that we're in a nutcrack, and we've got to sell this as quick as possible to get the money. I don't agree with the plan that now exists. I don't know if we can...
Okay, so the tenor...
I'm leaning in the same direction that Hector would be leaning in. We need to at least modify the current agreement, if not negotiate a new deal with it.
Okay. We're going to start with you, Bill Kay. Victoria Crescent?
It should be as originally planned, which was for commercial and retail, and we should be actively going out and seeking people who would be interested in coming. The idea that we put, hey, would you like this property? And market it so broadly and only get residential, I just don't think it's satisfactory.
So you should be going and marketing it for commercial and residential and retail uses?
This should be in commercial uses?
Commercial and retail uses?
And retail uses. I do not want to see more homes there, more residential.
Gerard?
Ideally, I would favor what was planned for there, which is commercial mixed, that I would be willing to consider mixed use. However, they have, that development, meaning the whole Victoria by the Bay development, have reached their maximum in terms of residential based on the EIR. So there would need to be an addendum to the EIR. So it would need to balance out the timeframe versus keeping it commercial or moving forward with it being mixed use.
So you want, you would only want it to go for commercial or commercial and mixed use? And by mixed use, you mean and residential?
It could have some residential.
Including residential. Gerard?
On Crescent, I'm not in favor of commercial because, again, I don't think this economy can support any business dilution. If we want to create...
Any business?
Dilution in a way they are expand all over the city. If we want to create a business area with business momentum, we want to focus on area where people will come because there is no pioneers or just followers in that business. So I am for keeping the deal on Crescent as residential only.
So you're for residential only?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes, Victoria Crescent is out of the way from all the commercial activity that exists in Hercules. So I would favor it that being built as residential. I think all the commercial belongs on John Bjorn.
Okay. Phil?
Victoria Crescent is currently zoned retail embedded into the general plan to only allow retail. The feasibility of it being retail is unrealistic. Mixed use seems far smarter residential.
Retail is unrealistic, mixed use what?
Is far more feasible. Residential could be done, but to get it done, it's not going to be a parcel that serves the problem of, that's being asked about, which is the Ambac debt. Because the time to get it done will take far longer, and we'll be stuck with more debt from Ambac because of that.
It'll take longer to get it through?
All the governing issues. Another thing is that parcel and one other parcel the city owns that has not been discussed are the only parcels that have the availability for a school. That parcel to have a school would require a lot of remediation, but it and one other parcels, the only parcels possible for schools. And once our current bayfront plan is put together, as well as these other residential plans that are being discussed, we're going to have eight to ten thousand more community...
So you, I'm going to force these quick answers. So are you saying you want a school on the site?
I'm saying we need to study our overall plan to figure out where we're going to get a school before we decide what to do with that parcel.
I believe in the highest price for a property. If it means housing, then I would do housing. If a mixed use came in that was higher than the prices that we're receiving for housing, then I would go with that. But we know for a fact that nobody wants to come and put commercial there. It is too far away from where all the traffic's at. As far as Mr. Simmons' statement about putting a school there, he's only lived in the city for six years, and the state...
Nine years.
The state superintendent of schools said that parcel is not for a school. There is jet fuel lines that run through that parcel, and that's why it's not going to be built ever as a school.
All the more reason that we need to figure out where to put a school.
Do you agree with what he said though, that jet fuel lines running through?
I think I commented that to use it for a school would take a lot of remediation. Jet fuel lines can be moved. I'm not certain that that parcel is the best choice. I'm referring to the fact that before this...
Okay, so hold on.
Before we give away all our properties, we need to look at our overall needs.
But you agree that this parcel would not be adequate for a school?
That depends.
You agree that jet fuel line's going through there?
No, it hasn't been brought forth in the past decade. I've lived there nine years. It may not be, but again, we've got to look at our overall plans to understand where schools will go, where retail will go, where residential will go.
Ms. Corsting, what occurred was that the prior developer, there was property across the street where Victoria by the Bay was at. They talked the city into giving the property across the street. And then it was found out that there was jet fuel lines, and the city could not build that elementary school there. The state superintendent of schools commented about that. It is not our local district, but the state superintendent of schools has deemed that property not suitable for a school.
As I said, there would have to be a lot of remediation. It's probably not the best choice. But you've got to look at the city's overall plan and quit throwing land away willy-nilly without looking at a plan.
I just asked that the candidate researched before it comes.
I did. I checked the maps, city planning to be exact.
Bill, how do you?
Well, Victoria Crescent was for sale as retail when I moved to Hercules in 2003. It was still for sale in 2009 and when the city bought it. It's been marketed periodically in the national conference of shopping centers. There is absolutely zero interest in that parcel for retail. It's far too off the beaten trail. We've had it on the market since, I believe, January. There has been no retail interest in it. We did receive offers for apartments and for single-family residential. The council made a decision that they prefer single-family residential at that site, and that's the venue we're going with. So yes, we should proceed to sell it to the highest bidder. And if Costco want to come in tomorrow and buy it, I'd sell it to them. But barring that, I believe we have to move forward with the sale judicially.
Okay, we're going to start with you real quickly, and we're going to do the same little exercise real quickly. And we're going to be fast, guys, the Sycamore Crossing.
I vote in favor of the Safeway sale. We can proceed with this sale. We can get through the deed restrictions. And Safeway wants to be there.
Dan?
I voted for the Safeway deal, the PSA. I believe that they'll come to town. I want competition in the city. I think having the gas station is going to give competition and lower prices.
You're so in favor of the Safeway sale?
I am absolutely in favor.
And do you think you can get through the deed restriction?
Yes, we will.
Phil?
I do not believe we'll get through the deed restriction, but if we do, we're still left with the current Safeway offer that is handcuffed by an EIR requirement that probably will be long fought. The gas station involved is directly across from a housing element. So there's a lot to go on that would have to go on, on that parcel. And we have other parcels that other grocery stores would serve our community just as well by.
So what do you want to see there?
As planned in the IPDP, which is a mixed-use element that would include light office, light retail, and residential.
Hector?
I have reservations about Safeway taking the entire parcel. I fear just seeing a large grocery store planted in the center of a large parking lot. So the, I would favor their going there as an anchor store as part of a shopping center that brings in other stores. We want more than just a single store in that location. So if they're the anchor store of a shopping center that brings in a large number...
And why do you want that?
Because this is what is going to bring additional retail revenue to the city.
You don't think Safeway would want to maximize the revenue of that parcel?
Well, Safeway as a single entity on that parcel would be insufficient. I think it needs to have other components to make it a destination...
I mean, if I'm Safeway, don't I want to maximize revenue from my parcel?
Yes, but the rest of the parcel is going to be a large parking area. And that is, right in the center of town and a large parking lot is not going to be...
Okay, so what do you want to see there? In some?
Safeway?
You want to see a shopping center that includes Safeway that's bigger?
That includes Safeway, but in an urban design, in the way that they're approaching, you know, College Avenue Safeway that they're looking to put in. So if it's an urban Safeway with other stores built to fit into the walkable neighborhood that's actually part of the zoning requirements of that area, I would be in favor of Safeway only in that regard.
College Avenue, the reason the College Avenue thing is the way, is it's incredibly tight parcel. Why, I mean, do you think Safeway's going to spend the money to do what they're doing on College Avenue there?
The city has right now an urban plan for that parcel. And I would require Safeway to follow that zoning and do an urban plan. I'm not talking about parking structures. I'm saying put the parking where, in such a way, in the building that follows a walkable neighborhood design. We haven't seen the proposal, so it's difficult to gauge on just, you know, hand signals that we're getting. So Safeway can be workable and be acceptable if it follows the urban design planning that for, that the city has zoned for that area.
Gerard?
Safeway is not only making supermarket and parking. Safeway is not making only a supermarket and a parking. Safeway is a big corporation doing commercial business. And they will develop that area, Sycamore Crossing, with not only a Safeway, potentially a gas station, but also something else to complement Crosses.
So you expect that you're going to see what Hector says he wants? I mean, you expect that you're going to see more than just a grocery store and a gas station?
Yes, the law could accept more than just this, just to balance Sycamore North, for example.
But you're in favor of the Safeway sale?
Yes, I am.
And are you, and do you think you'll be able to get through the deed restriction?
I don't know at this time. I was told we are in good shape to have good hopes. I'm not going to say yes or no now. I don't want it.
Okay, Gerard. Thank you for your patience down at the other end, folks.
You know, it's nothing against Safeway. It has to do with the deed restriction on that particular parcel. The city entered into an agreement which is very favorable to Safeway and agreed to spend a year and two hundred thousand dollars, money the city doesn't really have, to remove the deed restriction for Safeway's benefit.
Why do you say it's favorable to Safeway?
To remove the deed restriction?
No, no, no. Why do you think the agreement is favorable to Safeway?
The agreement is favorable to Safeway for a variety of reasons.
The quick, short answer.
Okay, the price. There's a clause that if a portion of the property is kept by the city, the price per square foot goes down, even though that is on the backside of the parcel and not on the retail portion that's considered to be, you know, important or most viable. The, there appears to be a clause that'll give Safeway back the deed restriction that we just removed. The city is paying for some improvements on the land, which will decrease the amount the city gets.
Okay, so what would you like to see on that parcel?
Well, there is an initial plan, development plan, and I would like to see something closer to that. It would have changed a lot quicker.
Mixed use?
It's mixed use. It would allow the city to move a lot quicker. It wouldn't have required additional EIR work or zoning changes or anything like that. And it would allow the city to have moved more quickly to get somebody into that parcel. Safeway could have moved to another parcel.
Okay, so you'd like to see residential...
Mixed use.
The mix being, I'm sorry, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Oh, smaller retail.
Small retail, residential, and what else?
And commercial. There was a part of the IPDP, one of the proposals was for a hotel, which, you know, whether that's viable or not in this market, but along those lines. Something closer to the existing IPDP.
Okay.
Yeah, my problem with this is I think this exemplifies what I started out saying.
Yeah, but I'm just asking you for a quick answer.
I don't have enough information to say when we're gonna do it. I'm not opposed or in favor of Safeway because I want to hear them. So much is going on between the original talk of selling to them and saying that we're in a deal. We don't know who else was interested. We don't know precisely what they want to build. It's been, well, maybe this and maybe that. I think we need more information. I think the deed restriction's a much bigger problem that we're talking about here because we're not negotiating to take it out. We sued them. We filed a lawsuit to acquire a title against the previous owner in order to try and clear that. That's just a great way to try and negotiate the removal of the deed restriction. Sue the guy. I want more information to come public on what's going on here so that we can make a better decision. And that decision may well be at the end of the day to go with Safeway. And I think Safeway would be a good tenant. It would be a plus for Hercules. I just don't have enough information about this deal to say that the citizenry, I can absolutely support it.
Folks, thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate it.